We're going to call together the meeting of the regular City Council of City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, May 21st at 7:00 PM in the new council chambers. We're going to have the invocation by our Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Steve Davis. Please rise.
Family Father, we thank you for this time to be here this evening to conduct business for you and for this city. Dear God, we thank you for each person here and this good number of people. We ask that you give us wisdom, courage, and strength, and above all, wisdom, to make the decisions that you would have us to. We thank you from Jesus Christ above all. We pray these things in his name. Amen.
Amen.
May I turn toward the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Cornman.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Mutha.
Here.
We do have a forum.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Yes, Mayor, I need to recuse myself from the Ammo Advisory Board.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Cornman. Any others?
I'll come back and give you the room.
Item six, citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. We need you to come to the podium, please, and then we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm not good at this, but my name is Joyce Mitchell, and I live at 1304 Gardner Street. I've lived on Gardner Street since 1967. I lived in another house, and now I've lived in the house I'm now reside at is since '86. And when I first moved back in our neighborhood, it was a pretty good place to live, but it's went downhill quite badly lately, and we have these houses that we're bringing today, and they have deteriorated quite badly, and they need to be torn down and the trash removed from the lots. Also, they bring in rodents, and we have a lot of wild animals that come around like skunks and coons and all those, and then we also, they bring in drug addicts, and we have quite a bad time right now. I have grandchildren, great-grandchildren that's small, and I keep them a lot, and I can't let them go out or anything, and you're, we have people that come in and out all the time in our neighborhood that doesn't belong there. And I don't think any of you all would want to live in the same neighborhood that I'm living in. And now I'm older, and if we sold our house, we couldn't get anything hardly out of it. And if we did, I'm too old to pack up all my junk and move out, so I'm kind of stuck. And I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Anyone else would like to come before the council? And again, please just give us your name and address for the record when you get to the microphone.
My name's Eva Ray at 1209 Gardner Street. I've been living there for 46 years. When the place I moved there, the place next door to us was beautiful. The lady that lived there, she kept it up. She had beautiful flowers and everything. And then in 19, 2011, I think it was about 2011, but she passed away. And since then, her son has absolutely let that house go down. He has done nothing to try to keep it up, and his sister lived in the house next door, and it's an absolute sham. It's a shame to let that house lay there. And we, I've called the code enforcement about it, but since, since his mother died, we've had, I've been swarmed by bees from his beehive, and I've been overcome with snakes when the boys mow the yard, mice in my house. I couldn't hardly keep up with them, and chickens in the backyard.
Oh, my goodness.
And the dogs. And the dogs would come through, the pups, they'd come, they'd knock the fence and come through. And we put rocks and stuff to block up the bottom of the fence to keep them from coming through, big rocks, and they'd just push it over and come right on through.
What's the address of the houses of nuisance?
1207 and 1207 and a half. And now it has grown up so much, and he's got stuff, I can show you pictures if you would like.
Is this what you all handed out to us prior to the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to point out to which ones they are? You want to hold them up, and we can look in our folder?
Like it is now?
Yes, ma'am. Just show us which picture you're wanting to talk about, and we all have a set in our folder.
Okay. Number two. Number two.
There you go.
It's the way it was in 2013.
Each one of your packets is pictures, and they're labeled number one through five circles. Some of them are stapled together. Now, we were fortunate enough that, believe it or not, these earlier pictures, like were in 2013, five years ago, just so happened to be made, because it's truly five years ago.
Wow.
And these pictures came off of Google Maps, so they're easy to see, they're easy to prove. Now, the other pictures are dated, and they're either going to be February of this year or to date, 5/21 of 18. Now, when you look through these pictures, and I hope you do, you're going to see some pretty disturbing things.
Looking face on at the pictures, my house is the one over on the left, and the one next to me is right there. No, yeah, this is, this is Ms. Webb's house.
Is there, is there anyone living in either one of those houses? I know one of them's.
No, no.
Well, I know one of them's got it.
Nothing's been done. My daughter wanted, that lives out of town, up north of St. Louis, she wanted to buy that house, the first house.
If the council would look at the pictures labeled number one, the pretty house with the roses, that's Ms. Ray's house. Notice 2013, the house is pretty, the roses are blooming. Notice 2018, the house is pretty, the roses are blooming, but look at the difference at 1207. In the first picture, and you're going to have others in here, you can see that there is a hole in that roof at 1207. Now, if you look at the picture of Ms. Ray on the first one, you can't see it because of the foliage, but you can see it in other pictures that I've taken, and I believe it is number three, it shows there was a hole in that roof in 2013.
It's still there.
In 2018, there's a hole where the cow could.
Yeah. Well, I know the lady that lived there was the daughter of the first lady, and they bought that house just so she could live there, but she had a stroke, and she fell through the floor.
Just for the record, we need you to say your name and address. Oh, okay. We just have to have it for the record. Thank you.
And she's afraid she's going to fall through the floor because the floor gave in on her.
Sure.
And so she went into senior housing, and that would have been, oh, a long time ago.
And these are owned by the same person?
Pardon?
The houses are owned by the same person?
Yes.
Okay.
And I talked to him one time about why he didn't move into his mother's house, because I, no, that's just hearsay, so I better not say that, but.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this documentation for us, and our city manager, Mr. Maskingham, has committed to cleaning up the city this year. That was one of his goals, as he indicated back in December, so we're working our way toward that path, and hopefully by this time May of 19, you won't have any of these problems.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you. Have you got anything else for us?
Well, I'm not able to keep my place up now.
Your home is beautiful.
But my son-in-law keeps the yard mowed for me and stuff.
Okay.
He does little things outside.
I am so sorry you're having to live with this, but we'll certainly bring it to the council's attention, and we will take it under advisement and see what we can do.
And we've called the council, I mean, we've called code enforcement several times, and they've done nothing. They've not responded to anything, and the man that used to live up on the corner, he's called him, but he's gone, he died due. So all my neighbors that I knew have died, and I'm still there by myself.
We'll start from this day forward and see what we can do to help, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
You wouldn't want your mother living next door to this.
You're exactly right.
Thank you.
No, I looked at this probably a week and a half ago. It's one of the worst places I've ever seen. I actually took Matt Winters, our city planner, with me, and if you go around the backyard, you can see in the fence, there's beehives knocked over, and one of the beehives actually has bees all over it. I mean, they were just swarming.
When city planner Matt Winters and I were doing the Bub Up the Bluff, we actually drove on that street. Someone had asked for a pickup, and we drove past this monstrosity, horrible place, to find two nice little neat sacks that we were there to pick up, and we're like, how does this happen? So we just happened on it a few days ago ourselves. We were doing the elderly pickup, and it might have been your house, we were picking up the small bags that were very neat, and yet this house, the whole place needed to be picked up. We didn't have room in the truck, though.
And I think the last time I had actually looked at it was back in 2013, where it wasn't anything like it is now.
I had never seen that one before that day, just hadn't driven down that street is the only reason, but I mean, yeah, there's no excuse for this. We're definitely on a mission to see if we can't get it cleaned up.
Well, I think, I know for sure one of the houses needs condemned, which has to go to building standard, and maybe the other one also. It's like Greg said, there's one house with, you could drop a cow through the roof, so it's, it's awful.
Okay, Ms. Webb.
Really no excuse for it.
Again, I apologize, but we do need your name and address for the record.
No problem. My name is Greg West. My address is 1184 County Road 476, Popper Bluff, Missouri. These ladies, I appreciate them coming tonight. They're my neighbors. Now, I don't live on Gardner Street, but I've got a house on Gardner, and so I consider if I own a home on a street, that the people that live there are my neighbors. And you know, when I talk to my tenants and I try to rent them to them, I say, you know, I've got three main rules. You pay me, you take care of my place, and you be a good neighbor. And if you do those three things, we're going to get along. If you don't do those three things, we're not going to get along. Now, there were two other neighbors on this street that sent letters that they asked me to read for the council. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
This lady is Triva, and I think Raff. Ms. Horton, she used to work with you. What's her last name?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, it's Triva.
Triva's the first name.
Thank you. Okay. City Councilman, my name is Triva, and I rent from Charles Lancaster at 1203 Gardner. I have a concern with the abandoned house next to me. I have seen personally people at this house that has no business being there. My concern is this. I have a 14-year-old daughter, and sometimes her friends stay with her, and I do not want someone, some stranger looking into our windows. This has been getting worse every week. One morning at 3:00 AM, as I was getting ready for work, I had stepped on my front porch to smoke a cigarette, and someone was climbing over the fence from this abandoned house. Now, Triva lives next to the house that you have pictures of that is so incredibly horrible that the fence is falling down and has all the beehives. Now, the beehives, most of them were intact in February when I took the pictures. Now, notice there's an incredible growth of foliage between February and May, but somebody has went in there and kicked over these beehives. They had to have done it when it was cold, or they would have been swarmed. But anyway, that has happened recently. I watched him get on a bicycle and ride around the block, and come back and start to go back. I turned the porch light on, and he seemed to go on. I'm afraid for my daughter and my mom to possibly be harmed, or my belongings to be taken or damaged. I have two grandkids that I love to play outside and not sure if they can, they can since there is several beehives that have been disturbed from local kids destroying the hives. I don't know where you all live, but where I rent and others on my street have been affected from this house. Signs say on this property hazard can cause harm. I feel as if it was myself or someone else that I would have been made to destroy, or a big fire given due to the property that have not maintained or cared for. Mr. West was the first person that asked how I feel about this trash, and so I'm writing this letter hoping you can do something about this. Thank you for your time, Triva, and I thank Raff.
How are you spelling it?
I'm sorry?
How are you spelling your last name?
I can't read it.
R A F F? We're thinking R A F F, okay.
Okay.
And these are for us?
No.
Okay.
I guess, yes, they are for you. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. The other letter is from Milton Edison at 1225 Gardner. Counsel of Popper Bluff, Missouri, I'm writing you on May 21st, 2018, due to the fact I have to work, or I would be there on my behalf. I'm really concerned about the abandoned house that are falling apart and allowing suspicious folks to stay in, the drugs and the peepers. I have to say, there is a lot of what looks to be drug traffic at homes in bad crowds. As there is a bit of property behind me that the owner is allowing to fall, fail to maintain in these rundown abandoned houses, something needs to be done. The, I have, still are bringing to many drug addicts, suspicious people, please bluff, clean up my neighborhood. Thank you. Milton Edison, 1225 Gardner. This is from Rhian McCauley, also at 1225 Gardner. To the City Council of Popper Bluff, Missouri, I'm writing you in hopes that someone will do something about some of the neighbors that are in the neighborhood and the homes. I am Rhian McCauley on 1225 Gardner Street, Popper Bluff, Missouri. We are experiencing some bad things in our neighborhood, like tall grass behind us that has caused some copperhead snakes in our yard that no one has done anything about, and the owners of the home don't care, as will with that we have what looks like drug trafficking in our neighborhood. I believe some of the homes that are in poor shape may be attracting bad crowds. Those homes are causing some of the neighbors to get hurt with collapsing fences, pests, and critters. If I could, I would be there on my behalf May of 2018, but I have a disabled child to take care of, and I hope the City Council will listen to my letter and put action in the neighborhood. I lived in this house for the last three years. Thank you for taking time to hear and read my letter. Rhian McCauley, 1225 Gardner Street, Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, I had the privilege of taking at least four of you through this neighborhood, It really upset me when I found these pictures 2013 on Google Street Maps. So the proof's in the pudding. I've got a few thoughts. I believe I have a common bond with my City Council and my neighbors that are here this evening. One thing, one thing in common, we love our town. We love Popper Bluff. I had the privilege of taking four of you council members through this neighborhood. What makes a strong town? Strong neighborhoods. What's a strong neighborhood? Homes both privately owned and rentals that are kept clean and mowed, neighbors looking out for each other, few derelict housing which encourage squatters or unsavory behavior. Why are strong neighborhoods important to our town? People want to live in a nice, safe, clean neighborhood. The first question out of, an out-of-towner asks about a rental, is the neighborhood safe? Would you allow your daughter or your mother to live there? You know, that's kind of tough to answer in some of our neighborhoods. So that question is becoming more difficult to answer in the past few years. Once strong and thriving areas like Fairmount Street, my grandmother lived for years, now has become the east side of Main Street, and you don't want to live over there. This is what newcomers tell us frequently, that they are told by locals. How did this happen? Was it that as homeowners sold their homes and units became rentals, that this area declined? Was it that people who rent don't take pride in rental property like they would their own property? Or perhaps it was that encroachment of drugs and failure to enforce code violations and our laws in a timely manner caused people to feel unsafe? The answer probably lies in a combination of all these reasons. What happens when a neighborhood goes into decline? Homeowners try to sell, homes sit vacant, vacant homes invite squatters, vandalism, crime, vermin. It's somewhat like a cancer that spreads. Soon the property owner is forced to rent to anyone that will offer some relief to his or her financial condition. What else happens? Many elderly citizens become afraid to live in their own homes that they've lived there all their life. Many banking on the sale of their home as their largest investment to take care of them as they age are now faced with the problem that their homes have drastically declined in value and worry about their future, may be forced to go on government assistance. So why have our neighborhoods been allowed to decline? Well, that's the million-dollar question. Is it a lack of pride of our citizens? Is it that code enforcement is short-staffed? Is it that the fines are not administered or enforced? Once again, probably a combination of all these things. So what's the solution? Well, y'all have been on boards, I've been on boards. Unfortunately, many questions, just such as that, cannot be answered in one word or one sentence or even one paragraph. If it was, it would be easily remedied. Well, would writing another ordinance be the solution? Probably not. We currently have more than adequate laws on the books to address this problem. Is it enforcement of these ordinances? Has our town become so overrun with violations that our officials are short-staffed? Or is it that once the violations have been written, do they fall through the cracks? Such as the picture of the violation in the folder I gave you. That violation has been put up since February. I blew it up. If you'll look at it, there's no writing on it. I don't know when it got put up, don't know who put it up. Well, is, are we missing some oversight? And by the way, that one's not colored, so you can't see how badly faded it is. So it's been up a little while.
Probably the ink faded due to the sun, it's been so long. I'm sure it was, I'm guessing it was dated whenever they put it up, but then it faded out.
I doubt it. I've seen a lot of these around.
With no dates?
A lot of them don't have dates, no, ma'am. I'm not saying that that one didn't.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you that I've seen a lot of these around. I've had several of them in my own.
You know firsthand.
Firsthand experience, yes, ma'am. Don't have to ask anybody about it. Or is it once that these violations have been written, they fall through the cracks? Such as your pictures in your, in the folder of the nuisance property on Gardner. The notices I received have a 10-day notice. This paper would not have faded this bad in 10 days. Are the penalties not stiff enough? The answer, in my opinion, is oversight. The ordinances are in place, the staff is in place, the city court, the penalties and fines are in place. The only thing that seems to be missing is oversight, the final step, making sure that the process is complete from start to finish. Perhaps computerizing this process would be great, tweaking what is in place or adding to it. A program that is city and citizen-friendly and transparent, where a code enforcement officer can drive by a property that's written a violation on, pull it up by address. Side note here, folks, you can't pull up any kind of violations in the city of Popper Bluff by address. Now, I think that's a horrendous oversight. I've had some conversation with Mr. Maskingham about this, and you have to know the person that lives there's name, or the police department file number. Nobody knows that, folks. When you're driving by, you know what the address is. I've done a little bit of research on that, and that's something that I think can be remedied. Has to be remedied through the municipal courts, and I cannot remember the name of whoever handles the city computerization. Pam, do you remember?
The software?
Yes.
It's Ncode.
Okay.
Ncode software.
That's it. Can pull it up by address and see that the violation has been remedied, or when a citizen calls about a home where trash is piled high, can look up the address and see that the person has been given a violation and has seven to 10 days to take it, or they will be going to court. Another side note, in the packet that I gave you, it has the name of the owner of this property, Terry Miles. The last violation he was given was the seventh month of 13. He paid his fine in 14, it's 300 and some bucks, whatever, the paper's in your sheet. Really? Five years ago, these ladies have lived there? Ms. Ray has endured this? Now, I know that we can't fix everything at once, but I would love to hear back from the council, from the mayor, from the city manager, of what would, they think would be the next best step to help our citizens and help our town. We have a great town, but if we don't, as a community, get ahead of this curve of trash, derelict, abandoned homes, homes that look like trash dumps, we're asking for a much bigger problem, and the bigger the problem, the more expensive it is to fix. So please, drive around your town. I will be happy to go with you anytime, and look at each home as if it was your home, or wouldn't, would you want to live by it? Most people don't want to live by this kind of problem either. I welcome any questions the council has for me.
Are there any questions from the council from Mr. West?
I don't know if I have any questions, but I would amen him. He's right, he's completely right. We've got problems along these areas that we're not solving. One of them that was in his packet, it's a failure to abate five times. There's not a fine anytime.
Now, actually.
Oh, pardon me.
Actually, now.
If I misspoke, please correct me.
Yeah, no, let me explain. Now, you should have another sheet that looks just like that with a single fine on it. If you flip that over on the backside, it'll tell you the amount.
Okay.
Now, the failure to abate is correct, but you have to click on the next step on the website, and it will give you the breakdown. That is the only code violation that I printed out the complete details on, and that was the last one he received, seventh month of 13. He did pay his fine, 300 bucks, or whatever it is.
329.50, it looks like.
Well, do you know? On the other failure, on the other failure to rebates where it says zero, fine them out, did you look and see a fine? No, sir. I did not. I'm just curious. I did not check any of those, but I welcome the council to do that because that is public record, that's available to a click on your mouse, just like it is mine. Now, something that I do find interesting, and I would love for somebody to explain this to me, the picture I gave you for the notice of violation or whatever it was.
The nuisance?
The nuisance?
All right.
That's, there's, there's no, there's no record of that anywhere that I can find through the website and the city court system.
They don't appear to be numbered either. A ticket normally has a number. I don't, I mean, I'm just looking, I don't see a number on it.
That's part of my problem. Where's the accountability? Where's the enforceability? Where's the Where's the oversight? I mean, it looks like a broken system.
It is.
Did the city put this on that property? Because it appears that it's taped on the fence.
In my opinion, the city put that on there. And then after the city put that on there, in my opinion, I didn't see any of this happen, the owner came back, and if you look in those pictures I gave you, took that stack of pallets that were behind that fence and made a pallet fence behind the chain link fence, so at least you couldn't see over at four feet high. Now, I took several pictures that you saw that are horrendous in the back of that house. And they're not hard to take because the fence has fallen down and you can look through the fence and take a picture. But now, um, Mr. Black, on other counts of violations and failure to abate, I have seen where the municipal court had a violation and he fined, and the judge fined them, and then they had another violation within a year, and the judge reduced that fine to a dollar. And it's, and he still didn't fix it. He, the guy paid it, but the mess was still laying on the ground. I can only assume that the judge was thinking, "Look, if I'm charging the money for the fine, he won't have the money to clean it up." I commend the judge for that type of thinking if he had followed through to see it happen. Now I happened to sit in the judge's courtroom, and I understand it, what is it, the city had, the council, you have three employees, right? One, two, and the judge?
Mm-hmm.
Well...
Correct.
Maybe we need some oversight. Because, um, one of the things that I heard the judge say, and I thought this was a great idea, "I'm going to fine this guy, whatever dollars it is, but if he cleans it up, in the allotted time, I'll give him a 70% reduction on the fine." To my knowledge, uh, the guy hadn't cleaned it up, and I don't think the guy's paid it yet either. So, you know, it's hard for me to understand, other than the people are thumbing their noses at the council and at the court.
You want to speak a little bit to the...
Yes, sir. There's a white four-wheel-drive truck. Now, and I really think this is interesting because that truck was in the same position in 2013 that it was in 2018. Now surely to goodness, it had to move sometime in between there, but maybe not. There's also a blue pickup bed at the 1207 and a half residence. The truck has two different license plates on it, and they're both expired. One, one expired in, I think, '05, and the other expired in 13.
Right.
Now, I have a little personal experience with code, writing up violations of folks that have improperly licensed vehicles. And I find it fascinating that this truck and this house has escaped scrutiny from any city official, according to the paperwork I can find, since the seventh month of 2013. And quite frankly, counsel, I find that unacceptable.
Does this gentleman live in the city?
I think so, ma'am. I, I, I think so. I, I don't really know.
He had another house that was tore down on 10th Street before he moved up on Gardner.
Sure.
Go on if you...
Where does he live?
Yes. I saw him at Walmart about two weeks ago.
Lead you to the microphone, please.
Yes. Terry is still living. I said I saw him personally out at Walmart about two weeks ago. He's riding one of those little electric carts in there.
Does he live in the city limits or does he have a home in the county?
As far as I know, he lives just a little bit north of Main Street.
Okay.
Up toward the sim- where the old bowling alley used to be, back in there.
Okay.
I'm not sure what street, but...
Okay. Well, we'll see what we can do to fine. Okay.
I didn't, I don't remember. I did look. If you go to Butler Villages, that's how I knew that Terry owned both of these houses. And the Cytus address is where it's at there on Gardner. But then I think it did have a different mailing address.
It does. I looked at it.
Did it? Okay, but I just don't remember what that is.
Gotcha.
I, I thought the house on 10th Street was involved in a fire and then he just, and I may be wrong, but didn't, he just didn't do anything with it.
I have no idea.
That's about four, three blocks from my house.
Yeah. It had got the same notice of violation, went to building standards and was ordered, tore down. And it took them a few years to get that tore down. I noticed on this last one, the one with the fine on it, I guess he changed judges. Didn't like their city judge, who is, because it went to John Bloodborne.
Yeah, I noticed that.
I did too.
I saw that, but I didn't know if that, what that meant.
Yeah.
He changed courts.
But when, usually when the notice of violation's posted on it, it automatically goes to the building standards board. I think it was just last year, we put a little more teeth in that ordinance, some part of it, but apparently it hadn't caught up yet.
Well, in my opinion, both these places are...
But council members...
I've known that way for a while.
They just need torn down.
Building standards, whoever, you've got the pictures from 2013. There's no way it would have passed any ordinance then. It had violations. So we're looking at violations for five years and the list grew huge. I mean...
Oh, I can give you this many more in the south end of town. I mean, I go looking at houses in my everyday job and run across them and jot down addresses four or five in a block and...
Why?
I apologize. Well, one thing, the council isn't city employees. I assume that they're doing their duty, they give their tickets, they have due process of the law.
You know what assume means?
I, I do. And so, but from this day forward, I can give you my personal commitment that I'm going to follow the ticket. I'm going to follow how, what the process is and where it ends up. And maybe we need to come up with some type of reporting system so we know what, follow the trail. Where did it end? What, where is our gap? Because there is a gap in the system somewhere, most definitely. But this council doesn't do it in a daily routine until somebody brings it to our attention. It falls, unfortunately, on the city manager's shoulders, the code enforcement, their supervisors. It's not us. And then the council changes. So, yes, I was here in 13, gone during some of that time, but, but from this day forward, I personally will commit, I know you've committed, the others may too, that we really do want to clean up our town. But we got to follow that ticket, follow the process and find out where it's fallen through the gaps. Because it's unacceptable to be five years and be in this condition.
Well, it's, these are some nice ladies, and I think it's unacceptable they had to live with it.
And I am so sorry they've had to live with it, but today is the first day, well, with the exception of this one house, I happened to see it, like I said, when I was doing Buff Up the Bluff, where I had never seen it before. But today's the first day that I'm personally seeing some of this. But I've seen others just in this bad condition that I'm concerned about as well, so...
And I really appreciate that, Mayor McVeigh.
And I mean it, because I'm very passionate about our town. I mean, I will do what I can to help clean up. But, I mean, there is due process of law, but there's still no excuse for it being five years.
There is due process, but just like you have employees, the city have employees, and maybe that's where, why it was mentioned about oversight. Maybe we need to have a flow chart.
That's what I'm, that's what I want to develop, is something that shows us that the, the path, like a bill going through Congress to get it law. Let's find out where the path of the ticket is. From the point of the, of the ticket to, is either paid or cleaned up or what happened? Because there's something falling through the cracks in those two. Now, some of them are not even getting tickets. That's a whole different animal there. We, we got to figure out that system too. But it's nothing that we can resolve tonight, but it's something that we can start tonight to start the process, to see what we can do to get it cleaned up.
And I really appreciate that because I think it's long overdue and, uh, everyone will benefit.
It's embarrassing that it's happened, it's embarrassing for our town, it's embarrassing that our neighbors have to live like they do, they pay their taxes faithfully, and, you know, the citizens of our town, that's our jewels, that's our crown jewels. And so we've got to take care of our city.
And we have two of them sitting right here that have been here a long time supporting this city.
I think you have a room full of them, you have a lot of citizens that live in the city right here.
Won't disagree. Won't disagree, but I'm just saying...
I would think, Mr. West, this is probably already started with this residential housing advisory board. I see that as a big forward stepping and maybe correcting a lot of this or...
I agree, but we have to give them the tools to do it with.
Right. But that's a big start and a big step.
I think it will be.
And I think it can move things along.
And honestly, when you all came to council that night, that's when I started diving into it. Because, again, I assumed, I knew someone had that job. I don't try to micromanage our city, that's not my job by any means, but I did start digging into it. As a citizen, I want to know as well as to what's happening. I mean, I remember a child, my child had a rent house, lived in a rent house one time and his friend abandoned a car and I got a $50 ticket in the mail. And I didn't know, how come I had a ticket? Because some kid left a, a car up on Jax without wheels, long before I was ever on city council. And I come down to find out what was on, and I had to pay the $50 and have the car towed off because the kid was long gone. But because I rented the house, it was in my name, I owed the city. Well, I go by and see some of these things today and I'm thinking, "How does that happen? Mine was under a carport, how'd they even know?" You know? But, and again, I, I wouldn't let things go five years. I'm afraid I would be finding somebody to help get some help. But I know elderly citizens, they don't know how to go or they don't have the means to do like we do, and we can certainly help.
No, to be honest with you, I had to kind of drag these ladies down here and I really appreciate them coming. They're great to have.
It takes a lot of courage and we really appreciate you doing that.
I asked a neighbor, a piece of labor, my quarter, to go with me to the council. A long time since he died.
Well, I hope to get it done before I die.
Well, I appreciate that.
And the others may speak up too. I don't mean to just, just me. I think it's all of us. I think everyone in this room is really genuinely concerned about...
Well, something you mentioned, Mayor, you know, the city is, needs funds dr- terribly. Hey, you donated 50 bucks to them to get rid of a car. I can see a lot of money in fines that the city could collect here.
And that was over 15 years ago, too.
Yeah. And, and, and I, I appreciate, I applaud the judge's theory of, "Hey, I don't have a problem at all getting rid of their fine or reducing it drastically if they fix the situation."
Well, and then we have a situation. A $300 fine is a lot less than the cost to clean something up. So sometimes people just pay the fine and let it be. But that's unacceptable to me too.
Okay, that is true. But I have spoke with the judge, and here's what he's told me. Every day that that piece of property is in violation of a ordinance, you can write another ticket and you can have another fine. Okay? Now that's what the judge told me.
Okay.
But I challenge the council to find anywhere where that's ever happened, because it has not, because I've looked.
And our goal is not to make them pay more money, our goal is to get them to clean it up.
Agreed.
So we got to find some kind of happy medium and they're firing out one ticket after another is really not going to resolve our problem, obviously.
Well, if they don't clean it up, they just pay the fine, they need another ticket fired out.
Well, there's got to be...
2013 to now, and there's no other tickets? Something happened.
We will, we will follow the, I personally am going to follow the trail. I mean, I don't know if anybody else wants to go, I'm going to find out what happened in that path. Did it, did it get lost at the employees level? Did it get lost in the court level, in the building standard level? I don't know. I don't know, but I can find out.
Well, I appreciate that and something that I would love too, just like I mentioned here, make it transparent so your citizens can see it. It's easy done. With this day and age and technology, it, make it transparent.
I don't know that it's meaning to be hidden, I don't think it's been done.
Didn't say that it was and don't mean to allude to that. What I am saying is, the system that the city has can be modified. I've spoke, I've spoke with Ncode. And actually, one of the guys I spoke with said that in the new version, they've talked about having things done by address, what have you. Now, this is completely my opinion, the reason they don't have it now is because they have to charge you for add-ons or specialty things. And I've got a whole list of cities that use Ncode for their municipal court system and like Fort Worth and some of the others, oh my, they've got a list of search parameters this long. But what was interesting, I didn't find anybody that had a search engine by address.
Interesting.
And that's what you use for everything.
But the tickets follow the person, not the address. The ticket follows the property owner, not the address.
And the state court system is probably in the next two to three years, is going to make every municipal court go to their own, the state's court software.
It's already in progress right now.
I mean, that was part of Senate Bill 5, I think, a couple of years ago.
Well, hopefully you can search my address there.
And you know, I think there's a breakdown, possibly with the code enforcement officers, I think part of it's court. You know, I've talked about for a couple of years of bringing code enforcement over to the planning department, which I'm sure Mr. Winters, uh...
Think it'd be an awesome challenge.
But I know, but I know, Miss, when, when Matt came on board, first couple of weeks, he spent a lot of time driving around town, which I was glad he did because he came in my office and said, "Wow."
Yeah.
I said, "I know." And that wasn't too long after I'd made the comment that we were losing our neighborhoods and I truly believe that and...
He had a premonition.
Yeah, and...
And now a new city planner that's going to help.
And nothing against the police department, I mean, I know they try to stay on top of code enforcement, but I think they have bigger fish to fry and I'm not going to say it's pushed to the back, but...
Well, you know...
Enough's enough.
My opinion is that I am not here to point fingers at all. I'm here to try to help, try to be part of the solution. I don't want to be part of the problem, I want to be part of the solution. And I truly think that if this council will put their heads together, what our citizens will remember in the future is not where we went wrong, but where we went right fixing these problems we have and fixing these neighborhoods. And then Matt, you'd really look like a hero. Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it. Any other questions for me?
Thank you for bringing it to our attention and you've put a lot of work into this and we appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
I, I know. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And again, please give us your name and address for the record.
Jim Crispin, 464 North Main. And I just couldn't help jumping in here, what, what Greg was talking about, there's one point that didn't happen or didn't, didn't cover by anyone, and I wanted to bring it out. And that is, this needs to happen now. It doesn't need to happen by next May. And I've got three examples. At Main and Hickory, there was a house that burned last summer. It was torn down within a couple of months after that. Same thing on a house on Kinzer, I believe, the 600 block of Kinzer. Now, the old gas station across from the Rogers, sat there for a lot of years without being torn down. But at some point in time, it got to be a nuisance to somebody, enough of an irritant to somebody that, that had the authority to make that go away. And what I'm asking for very simply is, don't let this drag out. Make it happen and make it happen very, very soon. Thank you.
And I know what you're saying, Mr. Crispin, and some of those houses, when they burn, will receive an insurance check so we can go in and tear them down and use that insurance money. A lot of times, the city has to go in and tear those down and we budget 30 or 35,000 a year to tear down houses and that takes care of about four or five houses and that's it, just because of landfill fees. We could probably spend $200,000 a year for the next 10 years tearing houses down, but that money comes out of general fund and, you know, we can only spend so much, so...
Well, on the burnt houses, um, when I first got on council, they were not collecting that insurance money. And back then, I think it was 10%. The state statute's now taking it to 25%. So we now have in place, if a house burns, that we can get an assignment from the insurance company so that when they do settle with the insured, that they give the city 25% of that money until that debris is gone. They're getting paid to have that removed, but they were, some people taking the money, leaving and not tearing down the structure. leaving and not tearing down the structure. So, there are, there are new systems, old systems that have been in, in place that we've now enacted. And so, that's how that Hickory Street house came down so fast is because all of it was, it all came together where the insurance held up back to 25% until it was down and then the citizens were not out anything. Because the insurance policy in place will take care of that, but many times they weren't getting that assignment. And like I said, the folks would take the money and they'd be gone and they'd leave it abandoned. So, then we were out to pay for it out of our pocket, out of our tight budget, so. There is progress. I know it's hard to see it, but I promise you, there has been a lot of progress. Needs to be a lot more.
Mr. Massingham, I agree with you that city could spend 200,000 a year tearing down houses easily, but I just want you to know that me and a bunch of other landlords spend over 200,000 a year each trying to improve our city.
Oh, I'm sure you do.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any, any other input from the citizens in this section?
Mayor.
Yes. Stipped out. Okay. Be just a few minutes and we'll resume. If anyone else has anything they want to bring before the council, they're welcome to. And we definitely have our work cut out ahead of us, get this all cleaned up. Thank you all. And I guess it'd be okay if citizens, their neighbors or if they drive around town and they see something, if they want to send those addresses to City Hall to Mr. Massingham, he'll take it from there. There's how many miles of street in our city?
2,800 miles.
2,800 miles. And so, you have two people trying to do the code enforcement. It's very difficult to drive on every street and I'm on many, many streets in town and I'm just amazed at when I go across the street I hadn't been on in a while, how the changes are. So, everybody can, we can use your eyes as well to, to see if you see a nuisance or see something going on and maybe it's in progress, maybe it's not been addressed yet. So, feel free to send it to myself, the mayor, or you can send it to councilman, your own councilman, or you can send it to the city manager and we'll take a look at it and see if it's gotten in the system yet to get it remedied. I think if everybody works together, then we just might clean up this town. Be just another few minutes and we'll get back to the meeting. We lost one of our sweet citizens, Miss Ruth Scoggins, this past week and she used to come to council time after time and we're going to sure miss her. She was a grand lady. All right, at this time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If a council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and second to accept the consent agenda as presented by the city clerk.
So moved.
First and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, workshop for discussion. The city council will discuss a recommendation from the municipal utilities advisory board regarding quotes received for repairs to maintenance of the building located at 110 Johnson Drive. Mr. Bill Bach.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This, as you stated, was for cracks at the foundation at the maintenance department, 110 Johnson Drive. I passed around some pictures of the building that we're referring to. The utility staff met with Smith and Company to evaluate settlement issue. We took quotes, three quotes for this project and after reviewing the quotes with Smith and Company, staff recommends a low quote from Foundation Support Works out of Woods, Collinsville, or Foundation Support Works by Woods, Collinsville, Illinois for the amount of $27,875. We discussed that at an earlier advisory board and would recommend approving this quote. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Bach? And we do have some pictures to pass around. Has each of you seen these? Thank you for bringing these to us.
Okay.
I like visual aids. It helps.
How old is that building, Bill?
Probably 100 years old.
I was just curious. I knew it was old.
It's the building between the railroad tracks and the river.
Right.
Train goes by however many times a day and.
Vibrant.
I think, I think, you know, we've done a lot of construction there. We put in the new river intake structure. This is, and we had the flood again and then that's when we noticed it, right after the last flood, we saw the settling. So, we'd like to get it repaired. I will include it in the budget, but like I said, you know, budget, we start on in October and this came in the spring, so.
Sure.
Like to go ahead and get it repaired and get it cleaned up.
All right. Any other questions or discussion from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion and second to move this item to the voting session to be held on June the 4th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our action required items, Bill number AA, item number AA, Bill number 8075. The city council will take action on an ordinance approving a final residential subdivision plat of 14 lots in RS2 general residential zoned area on Baron Road.
Move for the first reading, Bill number 8075, by caption.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Kirby.
An ordinance approving a residential subdivision plat in an RS2 residential zone on Baron Road in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading, caps on.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Kirby.
An ordinance approving a residential subdivision plat in RS2 resident, residential zone on Baron Road in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill number 8075 has been adopted. Item BB, Bill number 8076. The city council will take action on an ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of two and one-fourth percent, 2.25% pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of section 144.00 through 144.761 RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced or raised in the same amount as any city sales tax is repealed, reduced or raised and provided for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters to the city of Popper Bluff for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the city on August the 7th, 2018.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8076.
Second.
Motion and second for Bill number 8076. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Kirby.
An ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of two and one-fourth percent pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of sections 144.600 through 1.4, 144.761 RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced or raised in the same amount as any city sales tax is repealed, reduced or raised and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city of Popper Bluff for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the city on August the 7th, 2018.
Move for second reading of Bill number 8076. Second.
Motion and second for second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Kirby.
An ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of two and one-fourth percent pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of sections 144.600 through 144.761 RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced or raised in the same amount as any city sales tax is repealed, reduced or raised and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city of Popper Bluff for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the city on August 7th, 2018.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8076.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption of Bill number 876, 8076. Is there any discussion? And also, I think the city manager has passed out the information on the use tax. It is a very difficult thing to understand and explain, but I think this is a, a lot of good information that would be helpful in you to help with your citizens as to understanding why. And again, passing this tax will help us to clean up these derelict homes and raises for our employees and such, so it is a very important tax for us to consider voting for. That's, that would be the reason why. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for roll call, please. Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill number 8076 has been adopted. Item CC, resolution number 1877. The city council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the airport advisory board, the downtown Popper Bluff board, the municipal utilities advisory board, the tree advisory board, residential housing advisory board and the zoning board of adjustments.
Motion for first reading of 81877.
Second.
Motion second for the reading of resolution number 8177. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Kirby.
Can I just point out one thing? That should include also the residential housing board.
It has it on here, hon.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
Yep.
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the airport advisory board, downtown Popper Bluff board, municipal utilities advisory board, zoning board of adjustments, tree board and residential housing board.
Motion for second reading of Bill.
It's adoption. There's only one reading for a resolution, so motion for adoption and a second.
Second.
All right. And I, I really appreciate all of you, the citizens that have signed up for our boards. This is very, very important to have you join us in the, the city, to be a part of the city in, on these advisory boards and I appreciate each of our council members and I hope you do take it seriously. It is important that we attend to be the liaison between the council and these boards. If you can't attend, let myself know or one of the other council, maybe they can stand in because I think it's a good way for us to keep our communication lines open too. So, again, I appreciate each of you as, as we visited, those applicants and those that agreed to serve, I appreciate that very much. I guess at this time, we'll have roll call.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution 1877 has been adopted. And Mr. Cornman, you want to say? Item DD, resolution 1878. The city council will take action on a resolution, make appointments to the animal control advisory board, arts and museum advisory board, fair housing committee, historical preservation commission, housing authority board, library board of trustees, HART board, planning and zoning commission, disability advisory board and the Black River Coliseum advisory board of the city of Popper Bluff.
Move for the reading of resolution number 1878. Second.
All those, is there any discussion? Nope, Ms. Kirby has to read it, I'm sorry.
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the animal control advisory board, arts and museum advisory board, fair housing committee, historical preservation commission, housing authority board, library board of trustees, HART board, planning and zoning commission, disabilities advisory board and the Black River Coliseum advisory board of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Now, motion for adoption?
So moved.
And second?